2:00 PM, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Willmet, and now it's the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Barrow.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
Trustee Kennedy.
Here.
Trustee Plunkett.
Here.
And President Balinski.
Here. So six of the seven of us are here. That is a quorum. This meeting is being conducted remotely via the Microsoft Teams software, and I now ask Peter Skiles, our Director of Administrative Services, to explain some logistics to members of the public who are joining us tonight.
Thank you, President Balinski. Okay, so shortly, everyone will have started this meeting muted, and when President Balinski calls for public comment, those joining us with the Microsoft Teams client can toggle their mute status by clicking on the little microphone icon up on the meeting toolbar, which should either be near the top right of your screen or possibly near the bottom center, depending on which device you're joining our meeting with tonight. And those joining by audio conference dial-in can toggle their mute status by pressing star six. That's both to turn your mute on and off. And please note that you can only unmute yourself. No one can unmute another attendee, so you will have to figure that out in order to provide your commentary. And just in case of technical difficulties, you can provide your public comment over on the YouTube livestream that will be discussed here shortly, and then a staff person will read that back into the record here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skiles. For those watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is still under a gubernatorial disaster proclamation, which was issued by Governor Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person village governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the state has amended the Open Meetings Act to permit electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the village board during a gubernatorial disaster proclamation. So we are conducting our business tonight in compliance with state law, given these new provisions. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on our local access cable channel six and on the internet on our YouTube channel, and I will give you that URL. It's www.youtube.com/ user/villageofwillmet/live. So one more time, youtube.com/ user/villageofwillmet/live, and there's no dots or dashes or spaces. A recording of this meeting will be archived on the Village's YouTube website, as we do with all of our other televised public meetings. And as Mr. Skiles alluded to, a remote meeting requires a different mechanic for public participation. So to ensure that our residents, business owners, and other interested parties have the opportunity to participate in this meeting, we have solicited public comment prior to the start of the meeting via email. So if you send an email to publiccomment@willmet.com prior to the start of the meeting, your email has been provided to the board members. It will be included in the minutes of the meeting, but it will not be read during the meeting. Members of the public who are watching the broadcast can participate during our designated public comment periods by submitting comments through the YouTube Live chat feature, and as Mr. Skiles said, a member of the village staff will read your comment to the village board. Now, for those of you who have connected to the meeting via Microsoft Teams or via the telephone, at the appropriate time, I'll ask people to speak up if they would like to make a public comment. Because of the logistical difficulties of not being together in person, I will first just ask people to identify themselves as someone who would like to address the board, then assemble a list, and then I will call on individuals, person by person, for their turn to speak. For people speaking during public comment, you'll be allotted three minutes to address the board, just as you would be allowed during an in-person meeting. All comments from the public, regardless of how they are received, will be recorded in the meeting minutes, as we typically do. And I am just about to mute everyone. If I can find the little mute all box. Well, maybe I'm not going to mute everyone. Mr. Skiles, I don't see it. I wonder if, for some reason, it doesn't recognize me as who I am.
You have to show participants. There's a large number of folks in the meeting tonight. Yeah, there you go.
Yep, it wasn't there when I looked first, so. All right, so everyone's been muted, including the trustees and members of the staff, so if you need to speak, you need to unmute yourself. And again, for those who have dialed in on a phone, you have to hit star six as well to be unmuted. But I do ask that everyone keep their connections on mute until you're ready to speak, and that allows for a minimum of background noise. Now, before each meeting, the board receives a packet of agenda materials, and these materials are also posted on willmet.com on the Friday before our meeting, so that residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials which the board members receive. This week's packet contained 459 pages. So moving on to item two, that is public comment. And as I said, at an in-person meeting during public comment, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda. Again, this meeting is being conducted remotely, and so public comments which were submitted by email in advance of the meeting have been provided to the board, are part of the public record, but will not be read. And I will now ask people who are watching on YouTube Live, please submit your comments for the village staff to read. You can find the chat window to the right of the YouTube Live video window. Just tap right in there. While they are typing, I will ask if there are any individuals who have connected to the meeting via Microsoft Teams or via telephone who would like to address the board. If there is anyone who would like to address the board, I'd ask them to identify themselves now, and I will make a list.
Hello, it's Mark Wiremueller. Can you put me on the list? Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mark, and you're on the list.
Okay, I'll mute myself.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be, to address the board this evening? Okay, Mr. Wiremueller, you're up. Your three minutes are starting as soon as you start to talk.
All right, I'm starting to talk. Hello, it's Mark Wiremueller. I'm out here in front of the village hall. I see a couple of people chuckling. So I'm over here, and I came to the speech, to the meeting in person. I'm reading on the, on the website. So village will, the village board will meet on the second and fourth Tuesday, with a meeting held at the village hall. So I understand, and I just heard you read, we're, I'm going to move close to the building, by the way. It's a little windy here. So my understanding is that you've said that we're in a disaster, so even though we're in a disaster, I'm still out here. The restaurants are open. I might head over to Valley Lodge and press the door later, because they're open. Apparently, it's safe to go there, but it's not safe to go to a village meeting in person. So I understand, and I've discussed this the last four meetings, you guys are, in my opinion, my opinion is my opinion, that you're violating the Open Meetings Act. I would suggest maybe a couple board members could meet here at the village board, the village hall, in person. I'm trying to encourage people to go in person. If you wear a mask, if you saw the news today, they've actually lifted the mask mandate where you don't need to wear it outside in many cases. So maybe it's safe to have a meeting. A lot of village school boards and stuff are doing in-person meetings. So I ask possibly that you guys could maybe not follow the governor's order, or you could be like mavericks and decide, well, we're going to meet in person, because that's the right thing to do. So that's my suggestion. I understand, I've spoken about this the last four meetings. So moving on, I have a couple other issues. I have not heard anything about my attempt to increase commerce in Willmet. I want to change the liquor laws, so you can buy packaged liquor goods at the seven grocery stores in Walgreens and Jewel past 10:00 PM. The six communities around us all sell till midnight. For some reason, Willmet feels that you should not be able to buy a six-pack of beer five after 10:00 on a regular night. Maybe it's because of COVID. Maybe they want to keep the area dry. I don't know. But I've been working on this, and this is just one example where I want to increase commerce in Willmet. I've actually got a whole list of things, because I want the commerce to be bigger in Willmet. I want to be a shop local. I want more business here, more jobs. This is what I'm thinking about. I love Willmet, and I wish the board would jump on, at least do something like this. I've heard nothing about trying to increase sales in stores on this small thing. So let me see if I got anything else. Lead by example, one other thing, and I don't mean to get on you, but it's taken a long time to finish this streetscaping over here. This is, I've been here seven weeks in a row, and it looks like it's taken a long time to finish this job. So I would like the job finished, so we can get commerce back, and Willmet would get the parking. I hate to get on you guys, but this job is taking forever over here, fixing the streets in Willmet. And I think the outdoor restaurants would appreciate it. I'm not speaking for them or anything. So I appreciate the time, and it's a great thing in democracy that some guy like me can just speak at a meeting to a bunch of important people like you. So I appreciate it, and my time is up, and if I'm, I might run into some of you over here, if you dare come over to Valley Lodge or somewhere else. I might actually be going to Myers Tavern, too, so, in Glenview. So have a great day. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thanks, Mr. Wiremueller. I will comment on the three items you mentioned. One is, there was an extensive exchange with Corporation Council, and just because it's your opinion doesn't mean it's right. And we disagree on the law here. And by the way, I'm advised by counsel. I'm not sure you're an attorney. Second off, the matter of the Judiciary Committee taking up your suggestion on the liquor laws. At the last meeting, we told you that that's on the next agenda for the Judiciary Committee. So it hasn't been set yet. We've got a new board that's going to be sworn in in two weeks, and it'll be set after that. And with regards to the construction, they're working at light speed. The expected completion, Mr. Bremen, is still June 30, right? Of all of the work in downtown.
Yes, I actually have an update for that on my manager's report tonight.
So I would disagree with you in terms of how long the project has taken. They're actually been quite expeditious, and if you ask a business owner, we've been quite cooperative with them. So, all right. Mr. Skiles, are there any, or Mr. Artiega, I'm not sure who's handling that tonight, are there any comments that were submitted via YouTube Live?
There are not, President Balinski.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll move on from public comment to the consent agenda. Item three, and as described on the agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the village board are placed on the consent agenda. So tonight, all items that begin with the number three, which is item 3.1 to 3.29, that's the consent agenda tonight. Items on the consent agenda are up for approval. If an item is not removed by a member of the audience, not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved and will not be discussed. So I'll begin by asking if there's any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda. People who are watching on YouTube Live should submit their request now, and if there's any individuals who are connected via Microsoft Teams or via telephone who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda, I would ask them to please identify themselves now. Okay, and again, you do have to unmute yourself or hit star six. I'll give you another second there, because I forgot to remind you of that. Mr. Skiles, any, any requests via YouTube Live?
Still no requests.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Artiega. Thank you. All right, so hearing none, I'd ask if there's any items that any of the trustees would like to remove from the consent agenda. Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
That was trustee Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second. Sorry.
I think that was trustee Kennedy beat trustee Dodd. I saw you unmute our trustee Dodd. Trustee Kennedy got the second, though. So it's been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Trustee Sullivan.
Hi.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett.
Aye.
And President Balinski.
Aye. So the motion carries. The consent agenda has been adopted. If you were here for an item on the consent agenda, it was just approved. And I'll clarify for people who are dialed in, there are quite a few items under the land use committee that were approved tonight, and that includes 3.3, 3.4, 3.5, 3.6, 3.7, 3.8, 3.9, 3.10, not 3.11, that was a table, and 3.12. So if you were here for one of those items, it was just approved. There'll be no further discussion of those items or any of the other items on the consent agenda, so you're free to log off or hang up. But of course, you are more than welcome to watch the rest of the meeting. Moving on to item four, which is report of officers. There's a proclamation for me to read. Item 4.1 is proclamation designated April 30, 2021, as Arbor Day, and presentation of the 37th Tree City USA Award recognition from the Arbor Day Foundation. And the proclamation reads as following. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our village increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas Willmet has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its commitment to planting new trees. Now therefore, I, Robert T. Balinski, President of the Village of Willmet, do hereby proclaim April 30, 2021, as Arbor Day. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to preserve the environment and promote the well-being of present and future generations. So that is item 4.1. We'll move on. By the way, I'd just make a comment, given that would be the last proclamation I will be making as a village president, as President-Elect Plunkett will be taking over for the business meeting in two weeks. Next, we'll move on to a report from our village manager, Mr. Bremen.
Hey, can I make a, can I just ask a question? I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to make sure that, I noticed that there was a resident who had their hand raised just a few minutes ago. I don't know, Peter, if you saw that. I just want to make sure there wasn't somebody who wanted to make a public comment. President Balinski, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no, thank you, trustee Dodd. I did not notice that.
But now the person's hand is not raised. So I think it was Pete, it was, his last name began with a K, Constant, but I don't see him on anymore. I wonder if he hung up because he missed it. Mr.?
I've got the name. I believe it was possibly related to a land use case, so we'll check with John Adler, and we can follow up with that individual if they don't jump back on.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to.
No, no, that's, that's quite all right, trustee. Quite appropriate. If we missed that, I would certainly want to make sure that we allowed time for the resident. So thank you.
Okay.
So, Mr. Bremen, village manager's report, please.
All right. Thank you, President Balinski. I have two items tonight. The first is, the state of Illinois recently published community-level vaccination data, so I wanted to share that with the board and the community. For the village of Willmet, 78% of individuals 16 years or older have received a first dose of COVID-19 vaccination, and that compares to 53% at a statewide level. And in Willmet, 48% of individuals 16 and older are fully vaccinated compared to 38% at the statewide level. We're continuing to operate our vaccination clinic in Nutria. We have a Pfizer clinic open to the public tomorrow, starting the morning at 9:30. There are still slots available, and you can sign up on that. Links went out through our e-news and are also available on our social media. And as mentioned during public comment, I did want to share an update on the progress for our Central Avenue and downtown streetscape project. As you may recall, you know, we had shut down the project for the winter in mid-December with the plan to resume it in 2021 when weather allowed. You know, despite a really difficult second half of the winter with snow, we actually had an early warm-up, and we started resuming work on March 8. And the dry weather has really allowed us to make great progress. And we're on schedule, if not a little bit ahead. Work is on track to be completed in the downtown in late June. And when we talk about work in late June, that's the ornamental work. The benches, the festoon lighting, not, not the disruptive work that we have experienced to date. In the residential section of Central Avenue, the work is anticipated to be substantially complete in August. We're continuing to coordinate with Central School, residents, and our downtown businesses, and we really want to thank everyone who's been impacted and our residents who continue to patronize our businesses for your patience. We are almost there, and it really is going to look outstanding once complete. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bremen. I guess I have to thank our residents for their diligence in getting vaccinated here. Close to 80%. It's, it's hard to get 80% of any group to do anything. So that really does speak highly of our residents and our desire to move past our current situation. So thank you to the residents. Next report is from our Corporation Council, Mr. Stein.
I would hate to throw a curveball in your last meeting, Mr. President, so no report.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. So we'll move on.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt again? But I just got a, I just got a text from a resident in the area that told me that there seems to be a problem watching the, the video, that there's, the village meeting must be having recording problems. So I just wanted to bring that up in case somebody could, who's in this group, could, Peter, if you could possibly check into it.
Is that, and is that on channel six or on YouTube, trustee Dodd?
Yeah, because I'm watching the YouTube livestream, and I have been, and I'm not noticing anything.
Channel six? So anyways, I'm sorry. I just, somebody, this is somebody that just texted me out of the blue.
Let me, let me, let me ask my, I'm going to ask my wife to.
Well.
Yeah. I'm actually asking the question of my channel six watcher.
Okay. I'm asking my channel six watcher, and that is, person is the one who, it happens to be my husband who is texting me saying that he cannot watch it.
Unfortunately, this might be as good a point as any to remind anyone who's watching or the public that might be trying to watch channel six. We are soon to be underway with council chambers improvement project that's going to completely redo the broadcast to channel six. So right now, it's an analog signal, and we're literally connecting these teams' meetings to that channel six by way of a PC speaker pointed to one of the DIAS microphones to get the audio over there to the channel six broadcast, and we have to step down the video to an analog signal just to get it over there. And it's, it's really poor, as anybody who tries to watch channel six knows. But its days are numbered, and in the coming months, hopefully in the next few months, knock on wood, we'll have a brand new system to, to roll out and show off.
Okay. Sorry about that.
My staff reports the channel six is terrible, but YouTube is okay.
Okay, thank you, trustee Barrow. Where are we? Oh, yes, we are on item six. Moving on to our standing committee reports, and our first standing committee report is the land use committee. That's item 6.1, and trustee Barrow is the chair.
Last one for you, President Balinski. All items on the consent agenda.
Well, thank you very much for that, trustee Barrow. Item 6.2 is the Finance Committee Standing Report, and that is trustee Kennedy is the chair. Gina, you're muted.
I think I was the goat last week, too.
You are on now, yes.
The 2021 first quarter financial update and public safety pension funding presentation are on the agenda for tonight, and I'm not sure who's taking the lead on these. Mike, are you?
It's, it's a team effort. So Eric will pull up the slides. He's going to start, and then Melinda and I'll jump in.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. So can everybody see the presentation?
Yeah, we can.
All right. So for, so tonight's presentation, we're going to be going through the 2021 first quarter update. We're going to be giving a high-level overview of the three major operating funds. There will be a reserve discussion, and then there will be a review of the general fund revenues, as well as a brief discussion of the pension fund, the pension, public safety pension funding programs. So at a high level, we first wanted to look at the water fund and look at the 2021 budget and the performance in the first quarter of 2021 comparatively to 2020. So the primary driver on the water fund side for a revenue increase compared to last year is the addition of the North Main Utility. At this point in time, it had not been brought online in 2020, so that's where we're seeing the significant increase. But if we're looking at general consumption overall amongst our wholesale customers, as well as our residential customers, we are seeing a slight increase in consumption of around 3%. There is one other impact to our revenues, and that's associated with delinquent accounts. We are having a conversation later this evening on utility assistance program, so just tie in between the two reports. The other piece.
Mr. Hoggan, can I interrupt? So when we see first quarter year-to-date, is that the first full quarter? We're not partial, or?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So it's comparable.
Yes, yeah. The budget is the full year, is the full year budget, but the budget, but the actuals are the, are the first three months.
Great.
So then moving over to the expenditure side, our expenditures are up around $300,000, but really, those are driven by timing of debt service payments. So on the water fund side, we took on IEPA loans last year for the electric service improvements at the water plant. The timing of those payments took place in the first quarter of 2021 comparatively to no payments in 2020. Additionally, we did see some increases in winter events and contractual services, or sorry, overtime and contractual services associated with winter events and increases in water main break. So there were some slight increases on the expenditure side from an operational perspective, but overall, it was reasonably in line with prior year actuals. Moving on to the sewer fund side, again, comparison here of the budget and our first quarter performance between this year and last year. Our, again, our primary driver for the revenues in, from 2020 is the full implementation of the stormwater utility fee. At this point, last year, we were still having discussions on institutional credits and, and the full non-residential portion of the stormwater fee had not been fully implemented. So that coming online now is, and it is performing in line with our expectations. And then commensurate with the increase in the water consumption, there is a slight increase in our residential sewer charges due to that, those consumption increases. And then again, switching over to the expenditure side, we are up due to timing of debt service payments. Again, these are IEPA loans that are, these ones are associated with the sewer lining program. And then moving on to the general fund, this, the general fund here includes the expenditures and revenues that are associated with general operations, the capital equipment replacement fund, as well as a portion of our infrastructure investment that is related to general fund revenues. So again, from an overall revenue perspective, we are performing fairly in line first quarter 2021 comparatively to 2020. But Melinda, further in the presentation, is going to have a lot more information on, on the specific revenue sources and how those are performing year over year. Some of the expenditures that we're seeing in increasing comparatively to 2020, we've seen an increase in overtime costs. A portion of that is attributable to winter operations. Another portion is attributable to our overtime expense for public safety, so our firefighter paramedics, as well as officers who have been staffing the vaccination clinic. We also had a contract increase for refuse collection from 2020 to 2021, so we did see an increase on the expense side there. And then the last part, and Peter had mentioned it a little bit earlier, about the AV equipment upgrades in the council chambers, we've already started on that process, so we have, have had some payments. Typically, a lot of our surf purchases do not happen until later in the year, so this was really a timing issue associated with this. But from here, unless there's any.
Eric, you might move back. The, you know, so if you look at first quarter 2020, the 10.91 really didn't have much COVID impact in it, did it? Because the sales taxes from a prior month, and, you know, property tax and all the rest. Maybe there was some falloff in permits the last two weeks, but, but that's a fairly clean pre-COVID number. So being on top of it is, that's, that's reasonably positive news. Does that?
Yeah, it is a very positive outlook associated with this, and again, you're, you're spot on there that it is all pre-COVID information from 2020, so we are tracking very well with what, where we were at last year. And as I mentioned earlier, Melinda, she goes through, is going to talk about some of those high-performing revenues or performing better-than-expected revenues as, as part of her discussion, and those include real estate transfer tax, as well as some of those other items.
Eric, I have a further question on this.
Yes.
So this is kind of, it's piggybacking on what President Balinski said. So this is showing first quarter year-to-date, so it's showing revenues of 10.9. So, and I can understand when we looked at like the sewer fund and the water fund, that the revenue streams can be, can fluctuate. For example, we get more people using water in the summer and things like that. So, but I'm, I have a question, and do we, do we see those, do we see those same fluctuations in the general fund? And the reason why I'm asking is, because if it, I, if it's, if the first quarter year-to-date is 10.9, does that assume that our projected revenue, that our possible revenue could be, you know, 44, roughly 44 million, just because it's, we're at one quarter of the, we're at 25% of the year? Do you understand my question?
Yes, I do understand. And there are some, there are some, some timing issues associated here. So the first disbursement of the property taxes comes within the first quarter of the year. So we have significantly higher revenues that take place in the first quarter. And so it's not going to work out perfectly to, it's not a times it by four, and you're going to, you're going to get that value. There are ebbs and flows in, in that revenue stream.
And what about on the expense side?
So on the expense side, there is a relative consistency. We do start to see some increases towards the latter part of the year, especially associated with capital expenditures, because we start the, the planning process, the bidding-out process in the first and second quarter, and then we have construction and payment that really start to take. start to take place towards the end of the second, into the third, and final payments in the fourth quarter. So there is some ramp-up in expenditures. There is, there is seasonality associated with the expense side. So from there, I was going to turn this over to Mike to have a discussion on the reserve side. You are muted, Mike.
I got it. All right. So it's a little early in the year for us to project where the 2021 year-end reserve is anticipated to end up. Erica and Melinda are working closely together on that and putting together a long-term forecast. So as we move into the summer, we're going to start to focus in on that a little bit more as the Board looks at how we want to spend down the reserve, subject to the recently approved updated reserve policy, which was on your consent agenda tonight. So we do expect that the year-end reserve is going to be higher than the budget had projected for several reasons. One is the expected, the revenue performance is better than we expected, and Melinda will talk about that as we go forward. But as you recall, we had based this year's 2021 budget on significantly reduced revenues due to the uncertainty of COVID and had budgeted for a deficit without cutting services. So we are not seeing those revenue reductions like we thought we may, which is a good thing, and that's going to give us some more flexibility as we move forward with our reserve discussions. We also have two large non-recurring permits that we're feeling are pretty likely to come in this year. Loyola Academy's auditorium is in now for permits and plan review, so that should be out shortly. And that is a, I believe that permit fee is over $300,000. Optima is looking to pull their permits and start their construction this fall, I believe in October. I don't have a firm value on that, but that would be a large permit as well. Both those projects not anticipated in our 2021 budget. And then, finally, we've heard about the federal stimulus dollars that are coming to municipalities throughout the country. We understand that Wilmet's allocation is about $3.35 million. The federal government has yet to release their guidelines on what that can be spent on, so that may, or may not, impact our reserve discussions. They've pushed their guidelines from April to May, but that timing will work well as we meet with the Board over the summer on how to spend down our reserve.
Yeah, that, that sounds like Committee of the Whole meetings, folks, because that's a big number.
There's a few big numbers. That one, plus where we are in the reserve. So we're, we're going to be able to get a lot of really important work done in the community that's going to make a real difference, especially from an infrastructure standpoint. One thing we are recommending, and we're not looking for a decision from the Board tonight, but we are looking for some direction or concurrence, is that we have an opportunity to enhance this year's road program. Usually, when we want to spend more money on infrastructure, we're a year out because of all the lead-up work that has to be done with engineering projects. But as we did our survey work and our topography sampling, I'm sorry, our soil sampling for the 2021 road program, we did more work than we needed to, in case there was going to be an opportunity to spend down the reserves. And we have about $500,000, actually, in talking with the village engineer today, we think we can get that up to $700,000 in additional road program work we can get done this year. We got really great pricing in our contract that was approved at our last Board meeting, and we, you know, while we know we want to put together a, you know, a comprehensive reserve spend-down plan, I think we all know a big portion of that spend-down is going to go to the road programs, and we'd really like to get a good portion of that work done this year. So if there is support from the Board, our engineering team is going to finalize the design, up to $700,000. It's six additional locations. That doesn't mean blocks. That depends on how long the block is, but that's pretty substantive. That's a big impact that we can get done this summer into the fall. And what would happen is if there's general support or concurrence tonight, our engineering team would finalize the design, the contractor would finish pricing it out based on their unit pricing they provided, and we'd have to come back to the Board for approval of that contract. So this isn't the final decision point, but we would like to make sure that we're, we're moving in the right direction on that. And then, before we move into that, any discussion or questions on that, you know, as I talked about, we'll be putting together a comprehensive, you know, menu of options for the Board to look at in spending down our reserves, and we just wanted to give you some ideas of what we could be looking at, which are additional pension contributions. So for every $250,000 of additional pension funding, you get about a 0.16% increase in your funding ratio. Now, we'll get into that in much greater detail, because that also has future impacts on your tax levy increases. You know, the sooner you pay that unfunded liability down, the less you have to pay down the road. Looking at accelerating our road program in future years, in 2026, we're looking to get up to about a $4 million program. We think there may be an opportunity to get, you know, somewhere around $3 million for the next several years through this reserve, which could really make a substantial impact in the community. And then, we want to look at other projects, too, that sometimes cannot kind of push through when you're looking at roads, sidewalks, bricks, and alleys, such as active transportation, facility improvements that have been deferred, how we want to handle our debt on Central Avenue. So we've got a lot of good options that we're going to look at and work through with the Finance Committee and then Committee of the Holes or Village Board meetings. But I want to open this up to the Board if there's any questions or comments on the opportunity to really enhance this year's road program. It says 500,000. You know, I would recommend we go up to the 700,000 that Dan Manis thinks we can get done this year with our contract.
Well, and I guess the first question for you and Mr. Hallgren and Ms. Malloy is just, I mean, at this point in time, it's, it's, you know, near 100% certainty that we're going to be in excess of at least 700,000 from our, the policy that we just approved. So this is, this is, this is sort of money we know will be there. There's going to be even more to figure out how to invest, but this money is almost guaranteed to be there, correct?
Yes.
Absolutely. We're, I mean, we're looking at several million dollars in excess of our updated reserve policy, so, you know, we can do $700,000 in an enhanced road program this year and still have a substantial sum to go through some of those other items I had just talked about. And that, that doesn't include those large permits from Loyola and Optima as well, which would push that number up higher.
Right. So thoughts, thoughts from the Board members here?
Well, I'm always in favor of accelerating the road program, so I didn't want to...
They're not going to fix themselves, right?
They are not going to fix themselves. That's correct. And we, if you remember that graph, the average actually went down a little bit before it went back up again. It'd be nice to get that sort of a level slope upwards, if that's possible. I don't know if that 700,000 will get us there, but...
It won't hurt.
It won't hurt. Exactly.
Any questions? Go ahead, Peter.
No, Kathy, trustee Dodd, after you.
I think it was actually trustee Plunkett.
Plunkett.
Okay. So I think we already talked about this, but I wanted to kind of ask about, you know, the good pricing and, you know, how specifically, you know, we would be, you know, saving money here. Is there an economy of scale that we can do? So one question is about the pricing and, you know, kind of where we are normally, and, you know, I guess it always sounds better when you know it's a bargain. And secondly, just in terms of, you know, what is our capability in terms of how, how much our public works can handle in the, in the road program on a yearly basis, and where would this put us?
Sure. Both really good questions. So the first one, in terms of the pricing, you know, when we come back to the Board with a contract for approval, we'll have some historical data on our pricing per square foot and how it compares to make sure that, you know, this, this is a good decision. We're still early on in that analysis, but we don't want to spend staff time designing roads unless there's, you know, general support that this makes sense. So we'll have that level of detail for the Board at that time. And then, over the summer, when we talk about a larger road program, we'll have that, you know, detail in term, where what's called our PCI, our Pavement Condition Index, looks to go based on different funding scenarios, including this additional allocation in 2021. And the second question in terms of staffing, we do have the wherewithal to do this additional component this year with the existing staff. You know, if we're looking at, you know, significantly accelerate a program over the next several years, I did ask Bridgette and Dan to look at whether they need additional temporary engineering staff to help us through that, because we can't bite off more than we can chew. That would be a mistake. So that'll be a part of those reserve discussions, too. We may need to allocate some of that funding just to the operating side of that program, but we're not sure yet. So that's analysis we're undertaking right now.
Thank you.
Trustee Barrow?
I would, I would, I would observe that while all of these possible options are beneficial to our residents, I think that it's important that we, that we select particularly for, for some of our first spend downs, options that are immediately tangible and provide an immediate benefit for our residents. We all understand that, you know, for example, pension contributions are beneficial, and they can result in a, lower taxes and the like, but I think, given the condition of our roads and the importance of roads and alley repair, that we really should be spending a great deal of our attention and initially our, our funds, village funds, on the road program.
Thank you, Trustee Barrow. I agree with that. That's a good point. Can't see, resident can't see a pension contribution. That's, that's a longer-term thing out, but an extra half a dozen roads. You know, you start to notice that. You do that two or three years in a row, and you start to notice that really quickly.
Yep, exactly.
I think, just speaking for myself, I think that you could already notice an improvement. I think the last two years have made a noticeable difference in the general quality of roads and all to the good.
The number of really terrible roads that I drive over has gone down quite a bit.
Correct.
I agree.
They still exist, but they, it's better.
Trustee Sullivan or trustee Dodd, any, any thoughts, additional thoughts? Certainly don't feel the need to repeat us, but wanted to make sure you have the opportunity.
Yeah, no, I, well, I had caught up with Mike, Melinda, and Eric earlier today, and look at this is a good, good situation we have, so compliments to the staff for doing this. I think it's good discussions, if I understand it. I mean, I just hope we make decisions quickly so, so we can be implemented, to echo trustee Barrow's point of, let's, let's show the, the benefit to the residents as quickly as possible. And I also think, you know, we've, we've had how many discussions in, in just a short period of time in '21 on reserve, so well done to the staff to really show, you know, this is, this is what we're doing and how we're giving back. So I think it's good information. The questions I asked earlier today, they gave me very good answers, so it's a good problem.
Yeah, it is a good problem to have relative to other communities that are talking about how, what they have to cut to make, make ends meet here right now. And, you know, it's not just one year, and it's just not last year of COVID, but, you know, compliments to staff for, for years now of prudent fiscal management here.
And President Polinski, I noticed you had a little smirk about the Committee of the Whole meetings.
I won't be an attendance. You can, you could not expect to see me in the public then.
Well, thank you for putting those on our schedule. Your last act.
Just stating the facts. All right, so I think, I think you've got the feedback you need on the roads?
Yes, we do. So we're going to work towards designing an enhanced program for this year of about $700,000. I don't have the exact timing, and we would bring a contract to the Board, but we'll keep you updated on that.
So the slide that's in front of you right now is about property taxes. So not unlike what has already been mentioned, in the first quarter of the year, what you see is the impact of the first property tax bill. I think most folks know that the due date is normally set for like the first, second, or third day in March, but not unlike what the county decided to do with the second bill in 2020, they have delayed the late fee for the first payment in 2021. That is why you see the difference between the collection rate in the first quarter of this year compared to last year. So we did not have that delay for the first bill in 2020. It was done with the second bill. The other impact that we're seeing is that the county has continued to postpone the sale of the delinquent property taxes that is put off indefinitely. So both these actions, I think, are going to have a nominal impact on our overall collections. It's just the timing of our payments. It is slowing it down. So really, what we've seen is the bulk of the revenues that came in and do come in in the first quarter happen in March. It's the release of escrows. So those folks then who have the ability to, to make their payments separately, that's why you see this, this timing difference occurring. So as Eric goes to the next slide. So we talk a lot about our sales tax and our local use tax. So this really, in the first quarter, I think President Polinski had talked about this earlier, our first-quarter collections are reflecting the activity that happens in October, November, and December of the year before. So that's the interreres of what happens. So in totality, our sales tax and our home rule sales tax, they continue to decline slightly. It is the local use tax that is what we see continuing to increase. If you remember, when we were putting the 2021 budget together, we talked about a change in state law that was going to be effective January 1 of this year that was impacting internet sales. And what it was going to do is that no longer would internet purchases be subject to the local use tax. Instead, they were going to be subject to the sales tax and the home rule sales tax, and it was going to be based on where those items were delivered to. So we have yet to see what those numbers are. We do have some preliminary information for April. It looks to be a little bit down from what we expected, but again, we don't have the full information yet. So the first quarter of this year is still under the old rules for how internet sales were taxed. That is, they were at the local use tax, and we see that that was continuing to increase. Our sales and our home rule sales tax, however, continued to decline.
And Ms. Malloy, the, the local use tax for this, for the numbers that are on this, that are on the screen right now, that's still allocated per capita across the state, right? There isn't...
You are correct.
A geography here. So the fact that it's up does not reflect that Wilmet residents, it was up all over the place because people were shopping online during the holidays this year more than...
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
But next, next quarter, you'll be showing numbers where you actually have the internet numbers are based on, on what was purchased by Wilmet residents or what was delivered to Wilmet, I guess.
You are correct. What it was delivered to Wilmet residents, that's what we're going to start to see.
Okay. But on the other hand, you could look at the sales tax and the home rule sales tax, and if you remember, we did shut down, you know, restaurants were shut down for part of what is the fourth quarter of last year's collection. So I think I would have took, when, when the governor announced the shutdown, I think I would have, if you had told me we're going to be down just this little amount, I think I would have taken that.
Right. So we're still, really, the, the big question for us, if you remember, as we, we built the budget for 2021, we didn't have any detailed information to understand exactly how this change in state law was going to impact the sales taxes and the home rule sales tax, because we don't have anything about the number and what people are purchasing within Wilmet. So we held our estimate flat compared to 2020. We'll continue to look at this information as we get it. I still don't have a sense of exactly the, the level of detail that we're going to receive. So is, we expect to get that sometime maybe later this month. I actually think it's probably going to be next month, and I'm sure it's going to take us a while to start to understand exactly the, the details of what they're telling us.
And just to interject here real quick, I know Melinda's hinted at it a little bit, but I think we all anticipated that this change in state law was going to really benefit a community like Wilmet, where we assume a lot of residents are ordering online. You know, very preliminary data from April did not show that. So, you know, this is why we budget responsibly, and we don't assume large increases without knowing what's going to happen. So we're working through this. We'll get more information over the next few months, but we should not be surprised if we don't see that huge uptick in sales tax that we thought was going to happen based on this one month, just one large distribution. As Melinda said, we just don't have the detail from this date yet, so we need to better understand how those numbers are being broken out.
And a question, I guess, more for Mr. Hallgren. I mean, so I calculated this as being down, sales tax down 7% and, and home rule sales tax down 9%. I mean, our, our like scenario one and scenario two were like down 20 and down 30 or something like that, weren't they?
Yeah, so during the peak, or when, or when we originally developed it, we were expecting in... expecting in our decreases in that, in that 20 to 30% range and those got better over time. But I think even in our best case scenarios, we were looking at downturns in, in the 10 to 15% range. So again, we, we are still outperforming, um, kind of what our best worst case scenarios were.
Yeah. I mean, my recollection in October, when the governor announced that the restaurants were shutting down again, we were, I, I don't want to say, we were concerned. Okay. It was very concerning. We, we were unsure what was going to do. And if this, this, this result is not that bad. This is actually, I would say on the, on the side of good, um, you know, not, not because of any of the efforts of any of us, you know, uh, but just a, a good result, basically.
And I think one of the things to keep in mind is that the foundation of our sales tax and our home rule sales tax is truly our grocery stores. So, so again, this encompasses the holidays and such. So people continue to go to the grocery stores.
Well, and there might've been less travel this year, which offset that, you know, so more people shopping at home. Who knows? But anyways, okay. I'll quit harping on this.
I have a question for Melinda.
Oh.
Go ahead, Senta.
Um, so Melinda, in the future with the local use, um, being, you know, per geographic region, I believe that includes our home rule sales tax as well. Is that correct?
Um, yeah. The new statutory law is going to, it, it's going to change from local use tax and it will apply to both our sales tax and they will collect the home rule sales tax as well. You're correct.
Then will we have that listed as part of our home rule sales tax? Or will that be in a special category for the, the home rule internet sales tax?
Um, so the, the best way I can answer it is I don't know how, what level of detail we're going to see in the new reports. Um, I, they're going to have to provide something to us so that we can understand what is coming from our brick and mortar stores versus what is coming from internet sales. The level of detail that we get about those internet sales, I, I can't tell you what I'm going to see yet. But you could be right. It could be lumped into one number. I, but I don't know yet.
Okay. I was just wondering how we were going to be so specific on, you know, sales tax versus home rule sales tax when we were getting this from our internet sales as opposed to our local, local purchases.
So the reports that we get, that we see now, um, Trustee Plunkett, we actually do see it down to the individual businesses. So how, again, the internet piece is going to show up in this report, that I can't tell you. Yet. So if there's no other questions, we'll go to the next slide.
I have a question, actually.
Yes.
I, I do have a question, um, on the local use tax again, just, so, um, just following up on, uh, Mr. Brayman's comment. So do we have, so right now this shows that kind of the way the local use tax is distributed is somewhat favorable to us. I mean, we're, it's showing that. So are we, do we have any thoughts of, um, as we move to the new mod, to the new way it's going to be distributed? Do we think actually that might be less favorable to us than how it's being distributed today? You, when you indicated that, you know, we, it's, you know, early indications show it's not as positive as we might think. I'm just curious, are you guys concerned that it might be less favorable than the current model?
So I, I think here's one of the, here's a scenario that could play out. So the way that it's distributed right now was, um, was something that President Balinski had brought up earlier. So all of these purchases right now, as they collect, as the state collects those revenues, they remit it back to the various, um, entities based on your, on your per capita, your number of individuals that you have in your municipality compared to the state. So, so we know that the state as a whole has had an increase in those items that are purchased via the internet. That's what, one of the items that you can take away when you look at the trend in local use tax. We don't know though, where those purchases are occurring. So if there is a part of the state, let's say Chicago, that was the bulk of those purchases, um, then, then there could be a scenario that as these, uh, if, that would be a scenario that it could be not in our favor in terms of what would happen with the sales tax and the home rule sales tax.
Yeah. And you know, it's, it's interesting, given the data, and I hadn't really thought about this until right now. Um, but we had sort of been presuming all along that our residents purchase more than the average resident, which is probably true. But one thing we weren't thinking about is, you know, businesses, you know, big office buildings in Northbrook, how many businesses there are purchasing, um, things from Amazon, office supplies, you know, food, whatever, that might get taxed this way. So we might, Trustee Dodd, to your point, it might not be favorable at all. It might be negative. Um, if, if those, you're thinking about those purchases and that could be a lot bigger than, you know, the UPS truck coming down the street every week.
Yep.
Or every day.
Yep. That's a great point. That's kind of what I was asking. Something.
Yeah. And the other point to that, President Balinski, you know, talking to some of my peers in other communities that we all, as we all tried to make sense of this first, you know, bit of data is, you know, if you're not located anywhere near a regional mall, you actually might've seen an increase because your residents have to buy certain products online where it's much easier if you live in a Willmet or a Skokie to go to Old Orchard or to go to Northbrook Court. Um, so location and proximity to major shopping centers may play a role here too. We just don't know yet.
Okay. And again, as we're having these discussions, there was no data for us to look at to try to, to make a, um, to, to base our estimate on any differently than what we've done.
All right. I think we've covered this one.
So income tax, here's another one that is not super clear to us. And what is happening with income tax right now is as you look at the chart here, um, it's performing better in the first quarter than it did in 2020. Um, and income tax was one that we did not expect to be performing better. We had, we utilized the Illinois Municipal League, uh, as our source for developing our projection for income tax. Uh, they had income tax staying flat, which is, uh, actually they had it declining, which is how we built our estimate between 2020 and 2021. It wasn't until February of this year that they came out with an explanation to say, we need to, we finally are thinking about income tax differently. Uh, and you might recall that we discussed that, uh, earlier this year. And I, the, the, there was two major items that they started to think about differently. One was the workforce itself. And even though there was, um, the increase in unemployment, it was, the unemployment increased in those, uh, types of positions that had lower salaries. The higher salary ones seem to do fine, if not better. The other impact and probably the larger impact was the stimulus. And we also know there is additional stimulus dollars that are coming through right now. Those two factors are what are causing income tax to be performing better than what we had anticipated. We have two cautionary notes on this though. Number one, we know that the, uh, collection of income tax was delayed for one month. So instead of the April 15th date, it's the May 15th date. So we'll have somewhat of a timing issue that's going to happen. But the other piece and the larger piece is our last bullet point here, which is the state is looking at changing the local distributive fund calculation, which would result in a 10% reduction in our distribution, um, at the point that they put this in place. So, so there, there could be a negative action taken by the state, which will decrease our, um, income tax distributions going forward. Are there any questions about that one?
Yes. Ms. Malloy, if that were to happen, what would be the earliest date that that reduction would probably occur? Do you know?
Well, I think right now they're talking about this as part of the state fiscal year budget. So that would pass. Um, I, I would hope that we would know by May, but I think usually they pass it in June with a July 1 date.
So we would know by the time we budget for 2022?
Yes, that would be the hope.
Good. Thank you.
I'm not as optimistic, uh, Ms. Malloy, as you are. Usually the, uh, legislature makes those decisions on the last night, you know, how much they're going to cut and the like. So.
Right. The only thing that, that, that might cause us to know this a little bit sooner, and again, maybe you're going to call me optimistic, um, I, although you haven't called me that before. So I'm just, I'm going to say right now, um, is the stimulus money that we're talking about, and we talked about the share of additional dollars that Willmet looks to, to get, the 3.35 million that Mike had talked about earlier. The state is also getting an infusion from, uh, the federal government. And that is one of the reasons why they might not need to take the action on the local distributive fund. At least that's what the articles are telling us about right now. So that as those dollars are, are become more known and we know when those dollars are going to start flowing through, that could very well affect then the decision on the local distributive fund.
That's good, good color. Good color.
So then on the next slide that Eric is going to go to is permits. So, um, we've, again, this is one that we've already touched on. Um, it's our regular recurring permits are, are slightly outpacing 2020. So that is great. So our investment in our homes and such is continuing to happen. And I don't think that that should surprise anyone, especially when we're going to talk about the real estate transfer tax and what's occurring. But I think most people have heard even through the news, what is happening with, um, the housing market right now. It is robust to say the least. So we know that individuals are investing in their homes. We did have two large non-recurring permits. Um, they're listed there in front of you. And then Mike has already talked to you about the potential for two additional ones that could happen later on this year. So permits looks to be doing well so far this year. Our next slide though, so real estate transfer tax. Again, earlier this evening, we had talked about what happened in the first quarter of 2020 compared to what's happening in 2021. Our January and February of 2020 were actually very strong months. So the housing market started really strong in 2020 and then with COVID, it dropped rapidly. So we saw a rapid change in March. What you're seeing in front of you right now is the impact of a very strong first quarter. So we have had a strong January, February and March, and that's comparing it already to what were two almost record-setting months that we had in 2020. We are up, up more than 30 transactions so far this year compared to last year. It is a record-setting first quarter for Willmet, but we're not unique in that right now. So we know from articles that are appearing in the paper that the housing market right now is extremely strong. It is being driven by, uh, low mortgage rates. And, uh, the other piece is that it's definitely a seller's market right now. Inventory and supply is lower than what demand is right now. Uh, so in terms of a revenue source, this is definitely looking right now to outperform what our projections are. But we know from 2020 that we can be doing really well. And this is a revenue source that can change on a dime. It did happen last year. Uh, we did receive one large non-recurring revenue already. That's Optima and that's, that kind of ties in then to the permits that Mike was talking about earlier. So we have the real estate transfer, um, purchase that was, that occurred already in 2021. Um, and as the last bullet point is telling you here, uh, median sale prices are actually up for the year as well. So that's it for the revenue, the major revenue categories that impact the general fund and how they're performing in the first quarter. What we wanted to talk to you also and kind of round up the night with is the actuary reports and, and how the pension, uh, public safety pension funds performed. Um, the first piece is, if you can recall from our December discussion and how we ended the year, um, the pension funds in terms of their interest returns, they were up roughly 13%. In 2020, they were up over 18%. In 2018, they were actually down 7%. So we know that investment returns with the stock market, again, there's a lot of ebbs and flows. The last two years have performed well in excess of what our actuary, actuary assumed rate of return is, which is seven and a quarter percent. How that has manifested itself then is the actuary reports actually, um, smoothed those returns over a three-year timeframe. So in the reports, they talk about our return for the year looking closer to 9%, but that's again, that smoothing action that happened. Our one-year return last year for both the funds was in excess of 13% or approximately 13%. So when the projections are put together in terms of what our employer required share is going to be, we base it on an estimate and we base it on the best information that we have at that time. And we use a seven and a quarter percent, uh, return. We've worked with the actuary for the past three years to help us put together our property tax levy. So one of the things that you would have noticed from the memo that was part of tonight's packet is that our tax levy is actually slightly higher than what our required employer contribution is, what needs to be, to the tune of about $195,000. So what that means is we have levied slightly higher than what our employer required contribution is. Those
Is that, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Malloy, is it a typo in the slide? Should it be 5.93 instead of 5.39?
Um, I will verify that in a second.
That would be more like 175,000 then.
No. And, and if you give me just a moment, I'll explain why.
Okay, okay.
Um, so, so there's, because there's really two pieces to this. One piece is the property tax levy and we try to set that such that it will be sufficient to, to meet our employer required contribution. In addition to that, as part of the budget process, we had allocated an additional 500,000 that was going to be split between the two funds. So President Balinski, that's what gets us to the 690, roughly 6,000 that you see, um, in, in terms of the difference here. It's made up of the components.
Yeah, that was in the memo on page three. I, I forgot.
No, that's okay. And sorry, I didn't get, cut to the chase quicker for you there. So there's the two pieces that make up that 696,000. So one is there's additional property tax dollars that are going to go into the funds. The other piece is the reserve amount, the 500,000 that we had committed to, to be allocated. And the purpose of the additional reserve, if you might remember, it's to allow us to get to a 15-year rolling amortization. So in order to do that, we had worked with the actuary to look at what would it take for us to make that happen in one year? It was significant. We did not have the funds to do that. So what we had worked with over the, uh, quite some time was to come up with a phased-in way for us to be able to beat this. So what we had worked with them is increases in the property tax levy between 2019 and 2023, along with additional, uh, general fund reserves as a way to be able to get to a place that we could be at a 15-year rolling amortization. Why did we want to do that? Because by doing that, we were actually buying down our unfunded, uh, liability that exists on the books and was continuing to grow. And if that continued to happen, given the way the state had required us to make our contributions that, uh, which is a closed system. So by 2040, we were supposed to be 90% funded. If you can remember, we looked at that graph that it kind of was low over time. It was called a hockey stick. And then those contributions in those last, let's say nine years, were going to be beyond what we would want to do in terms of a tax levy to meet those required contributions. And this is the issue that the rating agencies have always had. The way that the state of Illinois has decided to statutorily require entities to fund their public safety pensions is actually not going to be doable because in those early years, you can meet those requirements. In the end, there's no way that you're going to be able to without squeezing out other services. So we as the village had worked with our actuary to say, what is a better way to fund this, um, such that we can meet our required contributions? That's why we came up with the 15-year rolling amortization.
If I can jump in here, I think, you know, the big takeaway from this slide is th- this is really great news for a municipality in Illinois. Um, you can never go wrong, especially in this state with putting more into your pension funds than is actuarially required. Uh, and we're, so we're going above and beyond that. So that's going to be well received by Moody's, uh, and it's going to help reduce future tax levy impacts. Uh, and that, that's really the intent of the amortization phase in, but also the benefit of putting additional dollars in this year. Uh, and it wasn't too long ago that our funding levels, uh, were in the 50%. And it wasn't too long ago that our funding levels were in the 50%. And now we're almost at 70% on the police pension fund. So we're really moving in the right direction. You know, there is caution, you know, the State of Illinois General Assembly continues to look at enhancing the Tier Two benefits. So that they've already done it once. There's another bill pending down in Springfield right now in this session to further enhance those benefits. So the more dollars we can put into these funds and get ahead of that, the better we're going to be.
Which, and Mr. Raymond, enhancing the Tier Two benefits, it's they're they're almost trying to bring them back to Tier One and eliminate, in essence, Tier Two.
Yes.
Yes.
Eventually, that, we would not be surprised if that's where we eventually end up.
Because that whole creation of the Tier Two was supposed to help with the eventual.
It did help. It's math.
Yes, and the math, you are correct.
So Mike, Melinda, you know, we talked today, and again, I called them because I thought we should pull off the memo of consent so we could celebrate this a little bit and give it more recognition, so I appreciate it. But just to confirm, so right now, we're in the memo, we're roughly 695,000. I'm going to say over budget, even though it says under budget. So the 195 is from the overtax. That's going to go to the residents, and then the 500 from the general fund.
Yes.
That's not, that's already been budgeted. So going back to your prior slide, when you talked about reserve and some options, the additional 250 is above and beyond that, that we could consider. Right, okay.
Ms. Malloy, when the funding ratios are determined, when? At the end of the year or the beginning of the year?
So they really are, so the report is dated January 1, but it really is as of 12/31 the year prior.
Okay, that makes sense. Otherwise, it doesn't make sense.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any further questions on pensions?
Yeah. Melinda, you know, I remember when we decided to go to the 15-year rolling amortization. These funding ratios were considerably less. We were at a much lower point. How much higher are these than we had anticipated? Based on where we thought we would be right now?
So I got it, I don't have that in front of me right now, but I have the work papers, so I will go back and take a look. But I think your point in terms of the fact that we are in a better position now than we were or what we would have expected makes sense because the projections were based on us just meeting the rate of return, which was seven and a quarter. And in the past two years, that's why I was laying out for you what our returns really were. So we were over 18% in 2019, 13% last year. So that alone means that we are in a better position than what we were projecting.
And to Trustee Plunkett's question, what that means is, you know, next year, 2022's, you know, projected required contribution is going to be lower than we thought it was going to be. So there are benefits every year after we put in more than we needed to. So this is really good news moving forward as we get into the 22 budget and how we're going to spend down reserves. We can get into that in a lot more detail.
And to Mike's point, so what we're doing right now is working with the actuary to now take us from where we're at right now and now make projections for the next three years.
And so, Melinda, this is Trustee Dodd, I just have one more follow-up question to Trustee Plunkett. I can't, I know when we went through this transition to the 15-year amortization, I don't believe we were ever getting at 100% funded. Were we, or was it more like, what's our targeted funding ratio, I guess is what I'm asking?
That's, that's a great question. So if you think about it, because we're saying 15 years, right? That means you can never be 100%. But it's, it is, we are targeting 100%. So the target is to get to 100%, but you're 15 years in terms of the open and amortization part to this. So you can never get to that, but where it should get us is somewhere between 80 and 90%.
That's what, okay, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, so the goal is always 100%, but by virtue of the fact that we're saying you have 15 years, so it's always open, you will never get to 100%.
All right, I think, any other questions on anything that we talked about financially? Nice, nice, nice presentation here, more, more good news than bad news, I would say, in the presentation. Okay. So I think back to Trustee Kennedy, any other items?
Nothing else, so that's the end of the Finance Committee report.
Okay, now we're on to the Administration Committee and Trustee Dodd.
Yes, I believe we have one item, which is the continued discussion of the utility bill assistant, assistance program for residents. 6.3, item 6.31, which I believe I'll be turning over to Mr. Hallgren and Mr. Raymond.
Yes, Eric will pull up the presentation and walk us through that.
I remember when we didn't have presentations in board meetings. It's a long time ago, but these have been helpful.
All right, so the discussion here on the residential utility assistance program, we're going to go through the background information associated with this, as well as kind of some of the administrative rules. But the first thing I wanted to do was just provide a little bit of information about the program. Since we had had the additional discussion, or the discussion two weeks about this, we've received feedback from several organizations, including Nutria Township, as well as, I believe it's St. Vincent de Paul, their assistance program, about their, their view of the assistance need throughout our communities, or through our community, and that they have seen some level of increase in the demand for assistance programs, whether it's utility bill assistance, whether it's looking at other types of assistance programs that they offer. So I just really wanted to put that out there, is that there, there is some need in the community outside of what kind of what we've seen from our internal numbers, and that there is communities, or that there is demand from residents with help on the utility bill side. So to give a little bit of background here, at the onset of the pandemic, we put together the Economic Relief Program. This provided a sales tax rebate program in March of 2020. We expanded that to service businesses in April of 2020. And then, as President Balinski alluded to earlier, when there was additional restaurant shutdowns in November of 2020, we extended additional dollars to support that group. So overall, we had approved around $531,000. Not all of that was spent based upon the grant applications. There's around $138,000 remaining from that, that original approval. At the last board meeting, we had a discussion about other potential financial assistance program. The overall consensus from the Village Board was to develop a residential utility assistance program, including administrative rules in the application process. So that's what we've pulled together for tonight, and we'll go through it in a little bit more detail here. But from an overall perspective, we're looking at a program that has an estimated value of just around $150,000. There's around $310,000 that we have, that we have deemed to be eligible based upon the current administrative rules with an average bill around $500. So looking at our outstanding bills, what we wanted to provide here was, this was a new slide from what was included within the packet, but really wanted to show the number of bills and the total value by each one of the ranges for individuals that were in arrears 30 to 31 to 60 days, those in the 61-90 range, 91 to 100, and then over 120 days. So you can see the largest group of individuals based upon value of outstanding bills are really people in that over 120-day range, which really speaks to, I think, an inability to pay for those individuals because these bills have been out there for such a period of time. And so the next part I wanted to go through was the current bill process. The village has not shut off any water service since the onset of the pandemic due to non-payment. What we have done is, is we've continued to notify individuals. We've tried to work with them on additional assistance programs, including payment plans, referring them to Nutria Township, as well as a different additional locations that might be able to provide assistance. But at no point have we provided, or have we shut off any service to individuals. And so really what our intent as part of this program is to, A, that we're going to help to wipe, wipe the slate clean for individuals who have had payment issues. But then we would, we would start our shut-off process again because we've given everybody that opportunity to wipe that slate clean with this one-time assistance. So the next piece I wanted to walk through here is kind of what the current process is for the billing process. And I'm going to use the next billing cycle as an example, just because they would be the first group that would be eligible for receiving that, that information. So our next billing cycle would receive their bill on May 4. If they had a non-payment, they would receive their first late notice on June 4, so 30 days after the initial bill date. They would then receive a shut-off notice at the beginning of July, so around July 7. This is mailed 60 days after the bill date. And then there would be a door posting, which is typically done around 70 days after the bill date. Based, and so this would be mid-July, so around July 15, there would be a door hanger. And then we would look to potentially start shut-offs again after July 31 for this first billing cycle. And so this is just kind of giving you a walkthrough of the process. And these are really all of the different opportunities that staff would take to communicate with residents in this situation that they have an outstanding bill, that there are assistance programs available to them. This next slide really walks through the different eligibility guidelines as well as the financial guidelines. So one thing I want to make clear on this section is, for the eligibility guidelines, these would be things that each individual would have to meet. On the financial guidelines, it's an or statement. So if they suffered a job loss, or they suffered loss of income, or they have income below that 80% moderate income guideline, they would be eligible. I don't think that was clear in the administrative rules, and we'll make that a little bit more clear as we, as we clean that up. But I really wanted to make that clear as part of this presentation, is that they don't have to suffer from any one of these four guidelines. It's really any one of them, and then they would become eligible. The other part here I wanted to just make clear is just that the guidelines set forth by staff here were really to maximize the amount of benefit provided to residents throughout the community. So trying to hit all of the different individuals that would be eligible for this. Again, the board can come to consensus if we want to make changes to any one of these different eligibility guidelines. But really, our intent as we built these rules out was to maximize that benefit to our residents. So from an eligibility guideline standpoint, they must be a current resident. One of the rules we included was that they must be, must have been a resident at the onset of the pandemic. They must have had a utility account that went past due after the pandemic. But we also want to make sure that the account went past due prior to the implementation of those programs. So we don't want people waiting to not pay their bills so they'll become eligible for the program. And then the last rule.
To that point, is April 30 the right day? That's three days from now, as opposed to, you know, three days before our last board meeting or something. I don't, I don't, just asking the question, not.
The reason that we had put it there is because we would plan to start the promotion of, of the program after we get the grant application built out. If there's any changes here, we'd promote it through e-news, really thinking that most people are going to see it through that conduit versus.
Right, it's, it's a good point. There aren't, there aren't actually that many people who pay attention to our board meetings and read our agenda, so. It's unlikely that somebody saw that two weeks ago and said, okay, time to stop paying my water bill. Okay.
Right, so that was why we had said at that point in time. And then the last part was really talking more towards the slide earlier about, we were talking about the bills and their time that we're in arrear. We really wanted to include anybody who is more than 30 days in arrears. From the standpoint of, they may have suffered something within the last month or so that may have prevented them from, from paying that bill, so they could have gotten sick, or they could be caring for somebody who's been sick. So we really didn't want to limit it to people who are over the 120 days. We wanted to provide it to anybody who had gone past due on their, on their bills.
But also met the guidelines below.
That, correct. And then, so then looking at the financial guidelines, the first one is if they had job loss. I think that one's clear, they could provide us information from IDES, from unemployment. If they suffered loss of income, they could also provide additional documentation comparing income from between 2020 and 21, or 2019 and 2020. We've also included that they have income below the 80% moderate guideline, which mirrors our EAP guidelines. And then the last one that we've laid out here is other extenuating circumstances. There are a variety of ways that COVID has impacted individuals that we couldn't fully enumerate as part of the guidelines. There could be people who were caring for a family member who got sick, were sick themselves, so they couldn't work for a period of time. And as opposed to trying to draw all of those out, we would give applicants the opportunity to provide us kind of an explanation of how it's impacted them. And then we could make a determination at the administrative level of whether or not to provide that assistance to individuals.
Mr. Hallgren, I have a question. So when you talk, when you talk about a job loss or income loss, and Mr. Me, you're talking on a household basis, not any one individual in the household?
You know, at this point, we had, I don't know if we went to that full level of detail. I think we were looking at potentially if there was a job loss at an individual level because that would have a significant impact on a household's ability to pay. If you had two incomes and now you're a single income, there is, there is a financial impact to, to your household.
I guess that's exactly what I was wondering about. So you don't have to lose two jobs, you just have to, so you look at it.
The way the.
Hole, and if there's been a job loss in the household, it doesn't have to be every member, it just has to be somebody.
That is correct. The way the rules are written right now is if there was a loss in the household, that that household would be eligible.
And, well, and Trustee Kennedy, you bring to, bring to my mind the point of, well, what if you had two very high-earning individuals in a household? And you would hope that they wouldn't apply for, you know, $300 water bill credit. But if you had two people, you know, two high-powered lawyers at big downtown law firms making, you know, more than a half million dollars a year, and one of them, you know, loses their job, is, is, is this program really designed for the household that still has a half million dollars of income? As opposed to, you know, and I understand people have bills and all sorts of bills that have their lifestyle around their income, but I don't know if that's something we want to think about or consider, you know, as well.
Well, I think the 80% moderate income guidelines, then that the third bullet point take care of that question.
Well, but these are ors. These are ors, these aren't ands.
Yeah, I think that's, I want to make sure all the trustees understand that particular question because, and this is something I've had some discussions with staff about today, just about the ors. So if we go back and look at the other programs we've done for the businesses, they've all been based on real impact as a result of the pandemic, correct? Whether it's sales tax revenue. And, and so the question I have is, this, these financial guidelines, somebody who is just, you know, a low income, and I'm not saying that we don't, that isn't an issue that we have to address. It's just because these are ors, you could have somebody who, for just the scenario that was raised here, you could have somebody where one person's lost their job, and, but the other person is not, and their income is still significant. Because it's an or, that person would qualify for this program, not that they would apply. Or even in addition, we could have some members of the community that actually for sure need support. There's no doubt about it, and that's, we've talked about the programs that we have to support them. But they would qualify just because they're under the moderate, you know, under the 80% income guideline, even if they didn't have a loss of job or a loss of income. And I'm just curious of how, how other trustees feel. Is that, is that everybody's understanding of how this should work?
I kind of hate to worry about something that is so remotely possible. I mean, I mean, the chance that two high-earning lawyers aren't going to pay their water bill.
Right, seems remote, I agree.
It's really remote, so particularly since they don't know that they're not going to get their water shut off at least at some point, or have to pay penalties or something, so.
I mean, I, let me, let me speak to this if I can. You know, the, the situation that President Balinski described of the, of the two attorneys.
By the way, of course, I was undershooting what attorneys make at big downtown law firms. I was just, it was just illustrative, so I hope you weren't offended by that, trustee Barrow.
But, but you certainly could have someone that suffers a job loss and receives a severance payment for some period of time, perhaps a lengthy period of time. And as a result of which, there wouldn't be any diminution in, in the income. I mean, it, it seems to me if we're putting a program together that's COVID-focused rather than general welfare-focused.
Right, that's the question to me.
Each of, each of these three, each of these three guidelines should be and. You should, there should be a job loss. As a result of that job loss, there should be an income loss. And we should be providing support for people in that that satisfy the moderate income guidelines. Now, I do support a program that includes discretion to allow the staff thoughtfully to address extenuating circumstances. But if we're going to keep this focused on COVID relief, then it seems to me that we ought to be covering all three of these things. And, you know, always remembering is, for, for, for those, for those of us that just ran for office, we said over and over and over again was that we were going to be spending our residents' money prudently. It seems to me part of spending it prudently is that we have guidelines that take into account true loss that's the result of COVID, not something else. So I, 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 I don't favor the approach that's been put in front of us tonight. I think that those ought to be and, and, and.
I guess I thought they were.
Yeah.
Trust, and, and I have to admit, I did too. And, you know, shame on us, we, we, we spent some time in law school. I thought, I thought they were that way too, but they're not.
Well, that's, that's why we're having the discussion, right? To flesh all this out, make sure everyone's on board. The, the one question, you know, trustee Barrow, is what if, what if you had a job, say, and I know this is a bad example, construction wasn't impacted, but let's say you worked retail and it ended up that your hours were cut in half. You didn't lose your job, but you lost a lot of income. So maybe it's, maybe that is an or where there's, you know, you have to lose income. And then the question is, is there an, an income threshold? And if it's not an or, maybe it's a little higher than 80%.
I agree.
For an and. Like, you've lost income, just much like what we did with the restaurants, where, and the retail stores, where we said you had to show you were down 15%, I think was our number. You've lost income and you're below some income threshold. You know, I don't know how much that would limit the help. And again, if you gave, if you gave staff the ability in, in certain extenuating circumstances to make an exception, you know, probably worthwhile, you know, exception being like, well, and, you know, we had two people in the hospital, you know, those kind of, you know, COVID-related extenuating circumstances, if you will.
What if you made bullet points one, two, and three ors? And then had bullet point three as a and?
I'm sorry, I said three twice, trustee Kennedy, you mean one and two and three?
So one, two, and four would be all ors? Like, you either suffered a job loss, or you suffered a loss of income, or there were other extenuating circumstances, and you have income below 80% moderate income guidelines?
And I might even suggest maybe it's 100%, because the moderate income guidelines are a lot lower than per cap income in, in Womack.
Yeah, I, I would suggest 120%. That's $112,000 in annual income for a family of four.
That's fine.
Yeah.
So I have a question here. So does that, I think there's two different categories here that we're, we're talking about. Number one is, you know, doing the ors and they've, they've had some kind of COVID loss, and they fall below a different income guideline. What about those folks for this, for this one-time payment that maybe can't point to these, any, any of these pandemic losses enumerated here, but have not, but are in arrears and are below that? So I, I just wanted to clarify, you know, where we are on those. And I, I do think that we need to realize the difference between, you know, the purpose of this is to, you know, handle these accounts to, to avoid shutting off people's water. And this is a one-time payment, which I think we can look at a little bit differently than if we were starting a, a program ongoing, you know, in the future.
No, that's, that's a good point, trustee Plunkett, which, where the, the, where that heads then is, okay, so the people who aren't eligible and still can't pay, what are we going to do? Are we, are we shutting off their water on whatever it was, June 31st or July 31st? Or, you know, I mean, I understand, my, Mr. Berman, the, the staff works on payment plans and all. There's all sorts of plans that can work collaboratively with a resident versus pay or, you know, it's not shut up, pay the money, or we shut your water off. There's, there's, there's other approaches that the staff utilizes today, correct?
That's correct. I mean, we have very, we, we, we do tailor-made payment plans. So, you know, we're just looking for some good faith, you know, act, action that you're going to start paying the bill down, and we don't shut off water. So I do think, you know, if you don't, if an individual or household doesn't qualify for this program, we do need to proceed down our shut-off path. Otherwise, this problem only grows larger and larger for those individuals, then it becomes a real problem for them.
But we have those, and, and, but we have residents in that situation all the time, regardless of this particular, but, but, right? And so I actually think that by having this program, it will help us understand how many residents we have in those situations that are not related to COVID. And so our, I think it's our E-HAP program or whatever, maybe we need to be looking as a board to broaden that. And this is going to help us with that. But this program is really intended to help us with the impact of COVID as, the, the impact on residents as a result of some COVID loss.
Right.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, trustee Plunkett.
Well, you know, we talk about, you know, how we did this for businesses. And sure, we can infer that the businesses that we gave money to had sales tax losses because of COVID. But, you know, it could have been a business that was failing, that it, that was going to do worse than it was last year, and they got the grant. So I think just in terms of how particularly we are, I, I don't think we can judge our residents on a scale that is harsher or more specific than we're judging our businesses. I mean, extenuating circumstances could be, you know, I had adult children living with us, and we just used a lot more water, and we weren't expecting this. And is that, you know, is that going to be listed as an extenuating circumstance? Maybe if, if they think about it. But I just, and I don't know the exact answer here, but just something, just one more thing to think about.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think the proposal is bullet one, or bullet two, or bullet four, and bullet three at 120%.
Yes, that was my proposal. And in terms of other extenuating circumstances, I don't think it necessarily needs to be an income reduction or even a, an increase in use. It could be, you know, huge change in household expenses. If you've got to hire nursing care because somebody's been extremely sick with COVID, that's going to impact your ability to pay too, and it's also COVID-related. So I, I think we need to keep that fairly broad. And not limited just to income losses, but also ways that the COVID may have affected people's spending.
Yeah, no, that's a good suggestion. And, and look, the, the, it's harder for the staff to make these calls if we're less specific, but in this case, it's a pandemic. And I'm not sure you can pinpoint every single possibility here of, of what an extenuating circumstance is. And I sort of trust in the staff, and we're talking about, we're talking about hundreds of dollars in each instance, not $10,000 a crack where they're going to use their judgment.
Oh, no, I have, I have complete faith that they will do this with, you know, compassion and good sense, so.
All right, so let me, let me just ask the question. Does, do we have a consensus around one, two, or four? And, so that's where the parentheses are, those are the three at the or, and bullet three at 120% of the moderate income guidelines?
Yes.
I've got three faces on the screen. Peter, Dan?
Yep.
Okay, so.
And so just, I have a question, President Polinsky, on when it says suffered loss of income due to COVID, is there a certain, how much loss of income do they need to suffer? Is that just, is it, is that up to the discretion of the, just, how, how much loss are we talking about?
It's a good question. I mean, to trustee Plunkett's point, 15% I think was our revenue threshold for the businesses. Is that what everybody recalls?
Yep.
So do you put 15% in there? Or, you know, look, I mean, 10% can be big, depending, I don't know. If, if you've got the, if you've also had the income threshold, you know, if it's an and, I'm not as, I'm not as concerned about that.
No, I, I think that income threshold kind of takes care of that indirectly.
Yeah, making it an and, like, it, it, it prevents, I think trustee Dodd, the worst potential abuse of this, where someone who really, really doesn't need it decides to take advantage of it because, you know, they're out of town and they didn't pay their bill for three months, and then they figured out that, oh, they don't have to, so.
And, and they're a lawyer.
Works at a big downtown law firm.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, I, I think we got consensus there. Mr. Berman, Mr. Hallgren, you guys good?
Yes, we, we have the direction that we need to update the administration.
Wait, Mr. Berman was going to ask a question.
Yes, you know, we're, we're good. And then what we'll do is, we're going to then move forward with the implementation and the public outreach. And then on the next village board agenda, the consent agenda, you know, as part of our disaster, emergency declaration resolution, the authorization for the staff to implement this will, will be on there. But we're going to start implementing now, the sooner we do that, the sooner these bills stop growing.
Okay, I do have one more question on the eligibility guidelines. So I wanted to first address the financial guidelines, but I do have a question on the eligibility guidelines for the other trustees, which is the very last bullet, which is applicant must have a utility account that is past due by greater than 30 days. I'm just, I'm just wondering, especially as we looked at that chart that was provided, you know, earlier, where it shows a number are at 30 days, but then it goes down. Because, you know, some, people do just forget to pay their bills. And so I'm just wondering if, if 30 days is the right number, if it should be 60 or 90? I'm just curious what other trustees' perspective is on that.
Well, it would be 30 right now, and then the program goes into, it has to be 30 today, like, in three days. And then the program kicks in. So you can't, if, 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 if this, this is going to end up getting paid in late May, early June.
But it could be, right, so you could have people that are 30 days, so, oh, I guess.
But they have to be 30 days as of three days from now, as of April 30th. So in a month and a half.
Saying because it won't happen, but so let's just say, okay, okay. So it's going to be, no matter what you're saying, I think, I think what you're saying is it's going to be longer than 30 days, no matter what.
Yes.
Okay.
Just given the timing of the payment, right?
Because the timing of the payment, okay.
I think the financial guidelines will weed out those who are just late paying their bills.
Yeah, okay.
Good conversation, folks. Look, this is, we're not voting on something, but since this might have been a matter of, of more public interest, I am going to see if there's any public comment. So just quickly, if, if you're watching on YouTube Live and you'd like to submit a comment for the staff to read, please do that now. The chat window is to the right of the YouTube Live window. And if you are connected via Teams or on the phone and would like to address the board, please identify yourself now. I'm looking at the participants, and I recognize every name on the list, so I'm not expecting someone, but there may be someone somehow traveling in stealth mode on Teams that I don't see. So if anybody who is connected would like to address the board, please identify yourself now. And again, you have to unmute yourself and hit star six, maybe if you're on the phone. All right, hearing none. Mr. Artiega, or any, anybody active on the old YouTube Live chat?
No comments on YouTube.
Okay, thank you very much.
And so we don't, president Polinsky, we don't take a vote on this, but is it, or are we going to take a vote in the next meeting? I'm just curious, though, just since next meeting, we're going to have a, I don't know the logistics for next meeting entirely, but is there, do we need a vote on this?
Trustee Dodd, there will be, this is the similar way in which we did the business grant program, where we've received the direction, the administrative rules will be provided as they have been tonight. Staff will begin to do the advertisement, but no money is going to be paid until there's a resolution adopting this and allowing the authorization of the money. That resolution, the last two times we did this, has just been included in the emergency deck resolution. So you will see it at the next village board meeting. It'll be included in the, the same resolution that authorizes the emergency declarations, because these are all related items.
But this current board would be the one that would adopt it?
No. No. The business meeting will be the new.
This current board X me.
And, okay.
And X trustee Kersman. Yeah, he's all, he's not at this meeting right now, but.
Okay.
And, and just to clarify too, these, these will not be cash payments to residents. These will be transfers from our general fund to our water and sewer fund. So there's actually no payments going out the door from the village.
Yeah, you're crediting their account.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
Which you guys do on occasion for various reasons all the time without, you know, there's adjustments to water bills every month and the like, you know, those kind of things that happen that don't come in front of the board. Like, you guys run the finances of the business without us.
On a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, okay. All right, trustee Dodd, I believe that's it for the administration.
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Sullivan, the municipal services committee.
Well, I can take a line from Mr. Stein and trustee Barrow and throw you after game. If you'd like to give a dissertation on all things sewer that you learned, or I could say all things on consent. Since it is your last meeting, we can continue the meeting talking about sewers, president Polinsky.
No, no, thank you. I think you would need a committee as a whole for me to talk about all the things I've learned about sewers over the last 10 years, so. The public safety committee has no report. Judiciary committee, trustee Plunkett?
No report.
Item 6.7 is reports of the special committee. There are no reports tonight from the special committees. Item seven is new business, there's no additional two businesses to discuss. So item eight is a German. I will say, well, let me clarify one thing. My comment about the presentations was the fact that we had them up on the screen. Usually, you know, 10 years ago, we were reading memos, and Tim was like telling us stuff, and it was hard to follow. So that was my comment about presentations. I will say, I will preside over one more meeting next week. If, and we're still trying to figure out the logistics, or two weeks from now. But in, under a normal circumstance, we would have a very short first meeting, which would be commenced by me, and we would adjourn signee die with that village board, the existing village board. And then at the end of that meeting, the, the new members would be sworn in. And then the next meeting, which is where the business would take place, president-elect Plunkett would preside over that board as village president. And the new trustees, I see two trustees-elect that are dialed in. The new trustees would take their seats and commence their service to the board. So this is not my last adjournment, it's my, my last adjournment of a substantive meeting. So I will be adjourning one more meeting. But given that, Matt, wait, trustee Kennedy, yes? Are you offering the motion to adjourn?
No, I wanted to offer a piece of new business because I think we should go out on a vote of some kind. So I would like to make a motion that all of us agree that we are going to miss you, president Polinsky. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Stein, is that allowed? Can I, can I entertain that?
Well, it's not on the agenda, but I don't think, I'm not sure this is final action. I think you'll be back somehow, some way.
Oh, don't count on it, Mr. Stein. I'll see you in two weeks, but.
There you go.
Well, trustee Kennedy has a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
There is a second.
All right, well, it's been moved and seconded. Are we going to call, do we have to call the roll, Mr. Stein?
We have to, we have to, it's a remote meeting.
Trustee Sullivan might vote no, though, so.
That's why, that's why I'm saying you have to, I want to see where this goes.
I'm just lucky that the staff doesn't get a vote here. Um, anyway, all right, thank you, thank you, trustee Kennedy. Mr. Hallgren, would you please call the roll on the motions?
Trustee Sullivan.
Oh, good lord, yes.
Trustee Barrow.
Yes.
Trustee Dodd. Trustee Dodd.
Yes.
Trustee Kennedy.
Yes.
President, uh, trustee Plunkett.
Woo.
Slip, one week too early.
A little too early on that one. And President Polinsky.
I, I guess I can vote, uh, aye on my own motion here, trustee Kennedy. Uh, the motion carries. Thank you very much, trustee Kennedy. All right, so we will move on to item eight. May I have a motion to adjourn?
They're moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was trustee Sullivan and then trustee Dodd. All right, uh, it's been moved and seconded. I asked the clerk to please call the roll on the motion to adjourn.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett.
Aye.
And President Polinsky.
Aye, so the motion carries. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone. That was very nice of you, uh, trustee Kennedy.
Good night.